Okay, you guys ready? Okay, I'll call the order, the Sparks City Council meeting of November the 12th, 2019. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Croods.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you all please stand for the invocation today from Christopher Dare.
Good afternoon. Would you join me for a word of prayer? Lord, we come to you and we, in light of yesterday being Veterans Day, just want to take a moment. We want to pray for our veterans. We want to pray for those soldiers on the field as we speak, those that are away from their family during this upcoming Christmas and Thanksgiving. Lord, thank you for their sacrifice. Lord, I thank you for those who did pay the ultimate price so we can have the freedoms that we have, that we walk in every day. Lord, I lift up their families, I lift up our country. Lord, I do pray, Lord, as we live, as we make decisions, that we walk forward with these principles, with these values of freedom that we get to live in, that we are grateful. Lord, I also lift up our first responders during this time. They have similar sacrifices they make, a fire, the police, Remza. Lord, be with them, keep them safe. Lord, I do pray for us, the elected officials and the others. Lord, I pray that we make great decisions, help us do that for this region. In your name we pray, amen.
If you all please re standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Bybee, would you lead it?
I'd be glad to. Please share me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. And move to 5.1, approval of the agenda. Do we have a card there? I can open it back up. I'll open up the public hearing again. Marika Moore. Come on down, welcome.
Is this the microphone?
Yep, just go ahead and speak right into that, give us your name, please.
Hi, my name is Marika Moore and I am here representing puppy mill free Reno and Sparks. I'm a third generation Nevadan and just wanted to present, we were actually just at the Washoe County Commissioners Meeting today and letting them know what's happening. Couple different things. Puppy milk free Reno, I don't, I'm sure you guys have heard that Puppy Love and Puppies Plus, the owners have been indicted on six counts of torture and murdering their dogs at the store. We've been trying to stop puppy sales, not the business, we would never want to shut down the business, but we're happy for them to stay in the business of animals, but, and there's lots of successful ones like Scraps and Healthy Tails, but that don't sell puppies. These puppies at the store, we have proof that's in the grand jury testimony of the Schneiders, that these puppies are coming from puppy mills. The puppy mill is in Iowa, it's Iowa, and I can get you guys a copy of that information as well. And we're just, would like to follow, I know in Reno, the city councils would like to ban puppy sales and we'd like you guys to look into it too as soon as possible. Like they had said, within six months, but right now holidays are coming and these puppies are being sent over in mass quantities to sell during the holidays and these spontaneous buys. And lots of the people that have purchased them, their animals have died, they come sick. And we'd just like you to consider banning the sale of puppies, puppy mill puppies. I'll forward you the information again in Sparks. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Next speaker is Renee Johnson. Come on down, Renee. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Renee Johnson and I live in Sparks, Nevada. I'm a multi-generation native Nevadan. And in regards to the most recent indictments of the owners for Puppy Love and Puppies Plus. The sad fact is, you know, the abuse starts in puppy mills and I've provided some information that can be handed out to you to go over later. And it's just really disturbing because at these mills, they're bred over and over again until their little bodies can't produce any more puppies. And then they're considered not useful anymore and then euthanized to cut down costs. They are, they withhold veterinarian care, they're matted, they have multiple medical conditions. And so when these puppies are shipped to, you know, across the US into puppy stores, more times than not, they are sick. So the abuse really starts there and then fast forward to now. I mean, if you just Google puppy mills, you know, a lot of information pops up about it through the ASPCA, Humane Society of the United States, Best Friends Organization Sanctuary in Utah. And so what, what we're asking you to do is join with the Reno City Council and the Washoe County Commissioners in, you know, coming up with a plan, the verbiage to not necessarily, not necessarily shut down the stores because there are a lot of stores across the US in states, cities, counties that have banned the sale, the sale of live animals. So they can just convert to offering supplies, pet supplies. So, you know, the reason we're coming to you today over this is because the same individuals own Puppy Love, which is here in Sparks, which is in your jurisdiction to do something about. And so we would really like you to act on that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Ardina Perry. Welcome, Ardina. Great, thank you.
Good to see you up here. You're almost as shiny on top as I am.
Good to be seen, yeah.
Yeah, you're almost as shiny. For the record, Ardina Perry. I'm here today actually on an ordinance created by Washoe County and it's being enforced now. At a scary place, I tried to parallel park, my heart hasn't quit beating on that yet. And if the person that owned the car is in the room, sorry. In 2016, Washoe County came before this, this body with an ordinance to regulate commercial animal welfare establishments. And at that time, the city council, as well as Gino, had some serious questions about that ordinance. And the ordinance currently is under review by the Attorney General's Office on the complaint that it violates NRS and it violates constitutional rights. I was going to provide a copy of this and I didn't get here in time for Julie to make copies and hand it out. Do you want me to do that real quick? I can.
You can do it after you're done speaking.
Okay. The purpose of the law actually.
Speak into the microphone for me, Ardina.
I'm trying, honey, I'm still trying to get my heart rate down. The purpose of the law actually isn't a point, although the law was created in Reno to be sent to Washoe to shut down a pet store. But that's not why I'm here today. A Sparks business, not a pet store, was contacted by Animal Control and this is what I'd like to get on the record and get public out here. They were told that if they did not sign this commercial animal welfare permit, the city of Sparks would pull their business license. I don't think we do that. When you read the commercial animal welfare permit, there's nothing in it that's enforceable. If they get mad at you, they can pull your permit, but there's no consequence to it. You can appeal it, but they can't. So the county kind of boxed themselves in and they really want to get rid of this pet store, but they can't, so they're like having Reno do it. And I feel really bad for my friends in Reno, but my concern is, we have Pet Co., we have Pet Smart, we have da, 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 da. I think we've got like 14 businesses that these people are going into and there is no dead puppy. That's why I'm not talking about that. That's just nut stuff that people need to get a life and move on. But all of these other businesses that are being impacted, they have a right to not be harassed too. They went into one business, told them that everybody else had the permit. Everybody's lawyering up, nobody's signing that permit. And I'll give you a brief thing and you can read it in a bit. Page one of a piece of correspondence between Animal Services and their DA, okay? It's my understanding that Washoe County wants to know how we can prohibit pet shops from selling dogs and cats. And it goes in there. The purpose of prohibiting that sale is to increase the adoption at Animal Services and humane organizations. That's their correspondence. And then the advice over here is, we can use a commercial animal welfare permit once passed, minus the provision of acceptable procurement, to go through their system and find out where they get their dogs. This was a law that was created for the purpose of invading people's privacy. And I really want my city, not, not to have this be about a pet store, but my city to have this be about the law.
Thank you, Ardina.
Thank you. Did I leave my purse down there? You want a copy of this one?
Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Okay, now we'll bring it back to the council. 5.1, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agenda.
Do you want to move 9.4?
Do you want to move 9.4? Not, we will move 9.4 up in front of?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for October 12th or 28th, 2019. Mr. Lawson.
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Second, okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to number seven, announcements, presentation, recognition items and items of special interest. I'm going to read a proclamation for the National Apprentice Week. Do we have somebody here to accept the proclamation?
There's a lot of people.
Come on, come on down. I kind of, I kind of figured that was the case. Rob, why don't you come on down, sit down in front here? You're trying to hide back there. Go ahead and grab the microphone here. And then after I'm done, I'd like you to say a few words and then we'll get a picture, how's that?
Okay.
Okay? Proclamation, whereas apprenticeship programs help to recruit and develop a highly skilled workforce which improves workplace productivity, reduces turnover cost and increases employee retention. And whereas apprenticeship training creates industry-driven and flexible training solutions to meet national and local needs and gives individuals of all ages the chance to learn from construction industry professionals. And whereas currently in Nevada, there are 71 registered programs, 5,786 registered apprentices, 47% of those are minorities, 4% are female, and 8% are veterans. And nationally, the skilled craft apprenticeship program has been in existence for over 100 years. Whereas, oh, and whereas apprenticeship programs help students and workers achieve and retain construction careers. While also assisting local construction employers obtain the skilled workforce needed to help drive growth in our local community. And whereas the Northern Nevada Building Construction Trades Union and associated contractors invite community members to visit their joint apprenticeship training centers to see the great opportunities and programs available right here in Northern Nevada. Now therefore, I, Ronally Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 11th through 17th, 2019, as National Apprentice Week. Well, Rob, I know you can talk, I heard you the other day going on for quite a while, so say a few words of wisdom for us, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Smith. Yeah, as you just announced in the proclamation, this is National Apprenticeship Week. And we like to stress to everyone how vital construction is to our area. If we, if we can't build it, they can't come. If, if we can't build the facilities Tesla needs, Google needs, which needs, if we can't build the housing that the workers are going to need for these new jobs. If we can't build that, these companies aren't going to be able to move here and our economy, our, our region will not be successful. So construction is critical to our area. We are here, ready and willing to meet any construction workforce need that this area needs. And number one thing we do to meet that need is our, is the apprenticeship programs, all registered through the state. These programs provide good livings, middle-class incomes with health benefits and, and a retirement for, for when they get a little bit older. We have a huge focus going on right now to recruit more veterans into our programs and also to recruit, recruit more women into our programs, which at the end of this week on Friday, we are doing a Women in Construction recruitment event over at TMCC campus that you're all invited to. If you, if you'd like to come check that out. Where we'll, all our apprenticeship programs will have some kind of hands-on, hands-on, yeah, hands-on, sorry, hands-on craft or something that, for the, for the women to do to, you know, try it out. So that's, that's on Friday and just, I always like to tell everybody that, you know what? These programs are free for the apprentices and they, these programs cost taxpayers nothing. These are all privately funded programs. When you want to talk about how private industry should participate in job training, you should look to our programs because these programs are free for the participants and these programs are free, or they don't cost taxpayers any money. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
And the good thing is, they all have a job while they're going through the apprenticeship program, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And we, we brought a couple, we have a couple apprentices here from UA 350 Pipe Fitters Program and from Local 26 Sheet Metal Workers Program.
Any of you guys like to say a word?
My name is Travis Mullins. I've been in the apprenticeship for a little over two years now. And like he was saying, this is giving us college degrees, you know, we, we have a chance to receive a college certificate as well at the end of this program. We have livable wages for our growing area, like we can afford the homes that, that we're building or people are coming in and, and everything. And I have a pension, a retirement, all this for, to provide for my family. My family is covered under our health insurance. Like it's, it's been really beneficial. It's, I've learned a great craft and if we can't build it, then our city will not grow. So we, we've definitely been trained well and this is a great opportunity for young people that like to work with their hands.
Good stuff. And there is no age limit, I mean, you have to be 18 and older?
Eighteen, three requirements, 18 years old, driver's license and a GED or high school diploma.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, anybody else wish to speak? Sure.
Good evening, guys.
Just give us your name and.
Name's Denver Hughes, Local 350 Pipe Fitter Plumber Apprentice, also along with one of my brothers. Born and raised Reno, Nevada. Left for a little bit, came back, of course, but when I came back, I needed to get into something that I had to work with my hands and I didn't know which way to go. I initially worked in an outside trade that was non-union, non-trade work. It was more or less a corporate-type environment and was put in some very serious, dangerous situations. Once I got into the apprenticeship, I realized that they're more out for the safety of us apprentices. They're more into training us in the technical trade, which is, to me, is very fascinating because for the infrastructure of this county, city and state of Nevada is huge. And to be able to go out there and work diligently with these contractors to help build a state that I was born in is really important to a guy like myself. And I'll say this, and I, I can't say it enough, I appreciate going to work for an honest wage. The trades have done that for me. They give me the benefits for my fiance and for my two little boys. I'm able to go to work, come home tired, come home after a safe day, which my fiance appreciates as well and I'm still able to provide. And to be able to do that under an education as in-depth as the Local 350 Pipe Fitters Union, it's, it's a pleasure for me to be a part of and it's an honor for me to be a part of. And I would recommend it to anybody, especially being outside that industry. So I want to thank you guys for our time, for staying here, listening to us. And I just look forward to building Nevada one day at a time. It's a good time, thank you.
You know, Rob, I think you got a couple ambassadors there that you can send anywhere. Very good. Anybody else? Otherwise, we'll take a picture. Don't be afraid.
There's only a million people watching this.
Yeah.
My name is Christopher Martinez. I actually just purchased a home here in the city of Sparks and a lot of that is due to the apprenticeship program. I've not only gotten an honest wage, a great wage that I can live on, I've gotten health benefits. And not only that, but the accomplishment of working with your hands and your brain. Going to school, I never knew how trigonometry, geometry would apply in the real world. Here in this apprenticeship, I've actually learned how you can use it for everyday skills, like in construction. Ultimately, you know, you're really pushing yourself, you're becoming a better member of your community because we also do a lot of volunteer events, like the Christmas tree recycling that we do, along with, among much other things. So ultimately, it's helped us to be more involved in the community and better citizen in general.
Thank you. How about one of you two, you up to? You're down to the last one, you know, so.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Sato and I'm a member and apprentice of the Sheet Metal Workers. And I've been an apprentice for three years now. And the reason I decided to go with the union is because union, we're not just a number. We actually have a voice and, well, they provided the training for us and it has really made a big difference in my life. Now I can provide insurance for my kids and my wife. And the struggle that I saw when I was a part of a non-union company, it's not, this, I don't see that like on a daily basis as I did when I was a non-union. Now we have more financial freedom and that's one of the biggest differences for me. So I want to thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you're up.
All right. We always like to hear the stories from the apprentices. I'm Josh Morrow, I'm the coordinator of the Northern Nevada Sheet Metal Apprenticeship Program. And so I'll speak on behalf of NACA, the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association, which we represent 11 of the Northern Nevada craft trades. Everything from Envy Energy, so our lineman at the power company who keeps the power coming to our houses and help end businesses, to the construction crafts, electricians, the, the operating engineers, sheet metal workers, plumbers and pipe fitters. To see the response from government and public entities to recognize apprenticeship programs is extremely important to us and especially in this day where we're talking about people come out, young people coming out of college with lots of debt and unable to find jobs within their specific career pathways through college. And I was one of those individuals, I'm a graduate of the University of Nevada many years ago. So, and I ended up coming back around and coming into the crafts and coming into the trades and completely changed my lifestyle from being a college graduate to coming into the crafts and being able to provide for my family and afford my home and things like that. So we really appreciate when, when government and public entities recognize how important apprenticeship is to, to our communities, to, to bolster and bring up our communities with, with good jobs, good benefits and good retirement funds. So we appreciate that and thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll get a picture, but you guys are very well spoken, I'm, I'm very proud of you. Good job. These can turn around this way. Come on over here. And I'm going to stand up here because you guys are all tall. How's that? Come around this way. Okay, so I can get that.
Love that.
Got it. Okay, you see everybody? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Rob?
Good job.
Listen, you're not going to stick around? Okay, 7.2, 3, 4, 5, 6 and 7, Neil.
Mayor Smith, a member of the council. For the record, Neil Croods, city manager, and we have a total of 12 vacancies across six different committees in the city that we're recruiting people to, to fill in for us. The first one, 7.2, is our Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. We have two vacancies on, on that committee and we're looking for, to fill vacancies that comprise four-year terms that would run through December 31st of 2023. We're looking for people who, who represent both the residential and commercial construction industry. So we're looking for some expertise in those positions. We'll accept applications through 5:00 PM the day before Thanksgiving, so 5:00 PM on November 27th, 2019. And if it's okay with you, Mayor Smith, at the end, I will come back and cover how you apply for each and every one of these positions. The second one, 7.3, is a single vacancy on our Airport Noise Advisory Panel. It's for a two-year term that will run through December 31st of 2021. Applications are also due by 5:00 PM on the 27th of, of this month. 7.4, our Alton Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. We have two vacancies there as well, both for two-year terms ending November 6th of 2021. We're looking for people with a background in performing arts and visual arts. And applications for both of those positions will be accepted through 5:00 PM on Monday, December 16th of 2019. 7.5 is our Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. We have two vacancies on the committee, an alternate for Ward 2 and a regular position in Ward 3. Both of those positions are co-terminus with their appointing council member and because of that, the, the term for Ward 2 will run through November 4th of 2022. And the position for Ward 3 will run through November 4th of 2020. Applications for both of those are also due by 5:00 PM on Monday, December 16th. 7.6 is for our Planning Commission, where we have two vacancies for four-year terms in each case. Those terms would expire December 31st of 2023 and we will accept applications through 5:00 PM on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so November 27th. And finally, the Charter Committee, we have three vacancies there to fill appointments from Ward 2, Ward 4 and for the mayor. All three of those positions are co-terminus with the appointing person and so they will all expire on November 4th of 2022. Applications for all three of those are due by close of business or 5:00 PM this Friday, November 15th. So if anybody would like to apply for, for any of those 12 vacancies across the six committees I spoke to today, you can complete a community service application available through our clerk's office. Alternatively, you can click online at the, at our city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Once you're there, click on the government, click the government tab on the webpage, then under Boards and Commissions, click Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission. Fill out the form and click Submit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we moved 9.4 up, you know, I think these attorneys have to catch a plane, don't you? So, 9.4, consideration, discussion and possible direction to the city attorney's office regarding the city's participation regarding the national prescription opiate litigation class in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio. Brandon.
Mr. Mayor, I don't get to catch a plane in a couple of weeks.
I know, you have to stick around.
Members of council, Brandon Sendall, Assistant City Attorney. To my right is Robert Eglet with Eglet Adams Law Firm. I'm basically here to talk to you about opioid litigation. As you know, the city's not currently involved in any litigation regarding opioids right now, but a district court in Ohio has certified a national negotiation class that will address basically thousands of different lawsuits against 13 different opioid manufacturers, distributors, pharmacy retailers and other related entities. distributors, pharmacy retailers, and other related entities. So, question is, why does an Ohio court's order affect us here in Sparks? It's because the court, when it certified the national negotiation class, structured it as an opt-out class, meaning if we don't want to participate in that national class, we have to affirmatively tell the court we don't want to participate. So that's why we're here in front of you today. So essentially, the Ohio court's order has forced the city's hand to make a decision here today. The deadline is November 22nd, so ten days from now. So we will need to make a decision on that, essentially today, since there are no other meetings scheduled between then and now. One wrinkle that's worth noting is the Ohio court's notice indicates that future settlements, if there is a future settlement reached, will funnel through the counties. And then from the counties, any settlement funds would trickle down to the cities based on an apportionment ratio. But it gets a little tricky if the county opts out and a city within that county stays in. The court essentially said that it doesn't know exactly how that's going to play out, but that a city could possibly be paid out of what's been referred to as a special needs fund. But that also there is a chance that that city would not be able to collect their proportionate share of any future settlement. So there is a little bit of risk here, because Washoe County, at its most recent Board of County Commissioners meeting, decided to opt out because they've already initiated litigation. So they're going to move forward with their separate litigation in state court. So the city council basically has three primary options here. First, the city council could direct the city attorney's office to refrain from filing an opt-out form, called an exclusion request form, which would mean that the city is going to stay in the national class. Second, could direct the city attorney's office to file the opt-out form and retain outside counsel. Eglet Adams is already retaining or representing a number of Nevada entities and has indicated that they would be willing to do the same for the city of Sparks. Third, the city council could direct the city attorney's office to opt out of the federal class action, negotiation class, and not make a decision on whether to hire outside counsel at this point and direct the city manager and the city attorney's office to bring an agenda item at a future date. So as I indicated, Eglet Adams is here, Robert Eglet is here. They, along with Reno-based Bradley Drendel and Janay, are representing a number of Nevada entities, the state itself, city of Reno, Washoe County, Carson City, Douglas County, Churchill County, Clark County, most of the, actually all of the southern Nevada cities, the major cities. And they are here to give you a little more information on potential options.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and thank you, members of the city council, for inviting us to appear before you today on this important issue. Our communities are facing the worst domestic crisis of our generation. This crisis was caused by the opiate manufacturers and distributors. The opiate manufacturers and distributors had the motive, and they had the means to cause this crisis. The motive was exorbitant profits in hun- in, we're talking hundreds of billions of dollars. The means was prescription opiates. And when you add the drug companies' motive to their means, the result is the largest drug epidemic in U.S. history. Two decades ago, they began the most aggressive pharmaceutical marketing campaign in history to dupe the public and the medical community into believing that opiates were safe to prescribe for chronic pain. Before the mid-1990s, opiates were only prescribed under three very narrow circumstances. One, end-of-life care for very painful terminal diseases like cancer. Two, severe acute injury and pain, but only for short periods of time. And three, very rare and unique cases of extreme chronic pain. In the mid-1990s, the opiate drug manufacturers started convincing doctors that opiates should be prescribed for everyday chronic pain, because they claimed that, one, that less than one percent of patients would become addicted; two, that the addiction could be easily managed; and three, that as long as the patient's pain was real, they would not become addicted. All of this was a lie. In August 2016, the Surgeon General wrote a letter that stated, nearly two decades ago, "We were encouraged to be more aggressive about treating pain, often without enough training and support to do so safely." This coincided with heavy marketing of opiates to doctors. Many of us were even taught incorrectly that opiates are not addictive when prescribed for legitimate pain. Drug manufacturers know that doctors rely on the information that the drug companies provide them. So the opiate manufacturers developed the most aggressive drug marketing scheme ever seen to persuade doctors and patients to use opiates for everyday chronic pain. I can tell you, I've been doing pharmaceutical litigation for thirty years now, and I have never, ever seen anything as egregious as what we've seen in this case. The scheme allowed the opiates to be prescribed to a much larger group of patients, exponentially increasing the size of the market. Drug companies spent tens of millions of dollars in marketing to provide false information about the benefits of long-term opiate use by, one, overstating the information about the benefits of opiates for chronic pain; two, claiming that opiate dependence and withdrawal are easily managed; and three, downplaying the risks of addiction. Unfortunately, their scheme worked. In the last two decades, the amount of opiates sold in the U.S. has more than quadrupled. Over three hundred million prescriptions for opiates were written in 2016. That's more opiate prescriptions than the total number of adults in the United States. There has been a 450% increase in opiate prescription sales since 1999 without any overall change in reported pain. For example, over 179 million pills were shipped into Washoe County from 2006 to 2012. But according to the last census in 2010, the population of Washoe County was only 421,997 residents. AmerisourceBergen, McKesson Corporation, Walgreens, Cardinal Health, and Walmart are the top five distributors of opiates in Washoe County. Most of us think of Walgreens and Walmart as pharmacies, but those companies are vertically integrated. They're both distributors and pharmacies. And those five companies shipped over 155 million of 179 million pills into Washoe County. The general public was recently made aware of this only a couple of, or a few months ago, when this data was made publicly available. But the drug companies fought to keep this information confidential for decades. Opiates are now the most commonly prescribed medication in the United States. And chances of addiction increases significantly after only the third day of an opiate prescription. As many as one in four receiving long-term opiate therapy in primary care settings is addicted to opiates. Now, over two million people in the United States are addicted to prescription opiates, which is significantly increasing heroin use in our country. Nearly eighty percent of new heroin users took prescription opiates before starting heroin. People addicted to prescription opiates are forty times more likely to become addicted to heroin. Prescription opiates is the gateway drug to heroin in the United States. In 2015, there were nearly 13,000 heroin overdose deaths in the United States. Most recent figures from the CDC suggest that over 175 people die every day from an opiate overdose in our country. Drug overdose deaths are now the leading cause of injury and death in the country. It's not car accidents, it's not guns, it's opiate overdoses. In 2016, the number of overdose deaths in the country was higher than the number of U.S. soldiers that died in the Vietnam War. And the numbers of overdose deaths increased in 2017. This is actually an old slide. It says, "Since 2,000, over 340,000 Americans have died from opiates." This is a two-year-old slide. It's now 400,000. 400,000 Americans have now died from prescription opiates overdoses. Opiate addiction impacts all people, regardless of race, gender, or socioeconomic background. Another disturbing fact is that the opiate drug companies targeted our veterans. A book called Exit Wounds, published in 2009, was written, sponsored, and distributed by an opiate drug company, Purdue Pharmaceuticals. It was written as a personal narrative of veteran. It describes opiates as the gold standard of pain medication and that it increases a person's level of functioning. It also claims it minimize, it also minimizes the risk of opiate addiction. The drug company's propaganda in Exit Wounds is contrary to scientific and medical evidence. According to medical journals, veterans returning from Iraq and Afghanistan who were prescribed opiates had higher incidences of adverse clinical outcomes, overdoses, and self-inflicted injuries. It wasn't written by a veteran, by the way. It was written by Purdue Pharmaceutical. They had ghostwriters write it. The person, the name on the book isn't even a real person. Nevada has the fourth highest drug overdose mortality rate in the United States. Nevada ranks second highest for hydrocodone, second highest for oxycodone, fourth highest for methadone, and seventh highest for codeine. Every city has truly been affected by the opiate epidemic, and no amount of government resources will ever be enough to address the havoc wreaked by the opiate crisis. Some municipalities have incurred significant expenses providing social services to affected community members. Frequently, local governments lack the resources to meet the increased demand for these programs, because funds intended for basic human services, such as elder programs, housing services, and vocational training are being redirected to pay for additional law enforcement. The drug companies knew their marketing and the way opiates were prescribed was contrary to the scientific and medical evidence, and their misrepresentations have been confirmed by the FDA and the CDC. The opiate drug distributors are equally responsible and legally liable for the opiate drug epidemic. In 1970, Congress enacted the Controlled Substance Act, which was signed into law by President Nixon, that created a closed system for distribution of controlled substances. This law required, or law prevents, drug company or drug manufacturers from selling directly to pharmacies and retailers. This law requires that drug distributors act as the gatekeeper between the manufacturers and the pharmacies and retailers. Under this law, drug distributors have a legal duty to identify, investigate, and report suspicious orders of opiates. Suspicious orders include unusual size of the order, unusual frequency of the order, and the unusual pattern of the order. There are over eight hundred registered drug distributors in the United States. However, only three of these companies control eighty-five percent of the market. The big three are McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen. For several years, the big three have failed their gatekeeping duty, because they have not been reporting suspicious orders to the authorities. In January 2017, McKesson, the largest drug distributor in the nation and the fourth largest company in the United States, was fined $150 million by the federal government for its blatant failure to report suspicious orders in violation of federal law. Cardinal Health, another member of the big three, was fined $44 million for its own failures to report suspicious opiate orders to the DEA. Not only have they failed to report, but they continue to ship millions of pills into U.S. communities, including Nevada communities. Each of the big three opiate distributors generate over $100 billion in annual revenue from distributing these opiates. The opiate manufacturers and distributors had the motive, and they had the means to cause this crisis. However, our cities, our counties, and our state have the motive and the means to solve the crisis. Over 2,600 lawsuits have been filed by various cities, counties, states, and tribes around the country. My firm, Eglet Adams, along with the Bradley Drendel Janay firm out of Reno, represent nearly all the governmental entities in Nevada pursuing opiate drug companies. I will tell you that every single county and every single city we represent have opted out of the proposed settlement class. Our firm currently rep- well, we represent nearly all of them. Clark County, Churchill County, Douglas County, Esmeralda, Humboldt, Lincoln, Mineral, Washoe, Lyon, Carson City, West Windover, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Reno, Henderson, and Fernley. It's our opinion that the city of Sparks should hire outside counsel and file its own case. Damages for the city of Sparks include past damages for the money that the city has already expended to combat the opiate epidemic, including EMS and first responders expenses and Narcon. Narcon is a drug that reverses the effects of an opiate overdose. The cost of Narcon varies from $150 to $4,000 per dose. These same opiate manufacturers are the ones who make the Narcon, too. The city is also entitled to recoup expenses for law enforcement, substance abuse programs, increased expenses associated with child welfare, as well as any other expenses the city has incurred associated with the opiate epidemic. Future damages include education, drug rehabilitation, future cost to continue to provide services and programs associated with the health consequences of the opiate epidemic, and punitive damages. The city of Sparks is not at risk, nor will any of its resources have to be used to prosecute this case. We will advance all costs for the litigation, work on a contingency fee, and take all the risk. Bank of Nevada has given us an $18 million line of credit designated just to pursue the opiate litigation on behalf of the county, cities, and the state of Nevada. We've handled many, as I said, I've been doing pharmaceutical work for more than thirty years now. Have handled a lot of big cases against the manufacturers and distributors. I was lead counsel in the hepatitis C outbreak in Southern Nevada in 2008. I was lead counsel in Southern Nevada's prosecution of the Actose litigation, which was a diabetes drug that caused about 6,000 people around the country to get bladder cancer. We're very familiar with the pharmaceutical industry, their business practices, the potential defendants in the case, and the law firms that represent them. We've been successful against them every time we've faced them. We've never lost. The senior partner of Bradley, Drendel, and Janay, Bill Bradley and I, are the only two lawyers in the state of Nevada who are members of the Inner Circle of Advocates, which is a highly sought-after, peer-reviewed organization that is limited to the 100 best trial lawyers in the country. Both of us have been named Trial Lawyer of the Year in Nevada on multiple occasions, and I've been named National Lawyer of the Year and National Trial Lawyer of the Year. And we, my firm has obtained twice the largest verdict in the country. And then another time, we obtained the third largest verdict in the country and the thirty-seventh largest verdict in the country. The thirty-ninth, I guess. That's a little bit about our firm. I can answer any questions you have. And also talk a little bit about this opt-in, opt-out issue, if you'd like me to answer any questions about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, questions or comments from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you for your presentation. I do have a question. You're representing a lot of other entities jurisdictions in the state of Nevada. Is each of those completely separate? I know the original Ohio case is class action nationwide. So my question would be, within the city of Sparks, would you need to find damages that are specific to our city in settling a case that is not going to be statewide or would not fall under the same award that maybe Reno or Las Vegas might have? Is that true?
Yeah, they're all separate cases. It's not a class action. It's what's called a multi-district litigation, an MDL, in federal court. To be a class action, you have to have commonality and typicality in the To be a class action, you have to have commonality and typicality, and the damages have to be basically the same and have the same defendants. The problem is, the opiate litigation, you have different manufacturers and different distributors shipping pills into each different county and city around the, and states around the country. So it's not amenable to a class action because it's just not, it doesn't qualify. So it's what's called an MDL. When they file these cases in federal court, and there's the same type of cases in different jurisdictions, they form what's called an MDL. They did that here. MDL's been sitting there for over three years, twenty-six hundred cases in the MDL. There's only been two cases where there's been any discovery done on, worked up. We're farther ahead in the Clark County case and the state case than they are in any of the MDL cases because they're just sitting there. So we are keeping the cases out of the MDL, pursuing a state litigation strategy. That's always the way we do it, in my opinion, and I think there's a lot of lawyers who share this opinion. Class actions and MDL, they're great for the lawyers, they're great for both sides, plaintiffs' lawyers and the defense lawyers, and they're great for the experts, but the clients don't end up getting what they should. A perfect example is the Actos litigation in Los, down in Southern Nevada, where I represented all the people in Southern Nevada who got bladder cancer. The MDL settled, and they got about two hundred thousand dollars per client who had bladder cancer. Then they settled with us, and we got over two million dollars per client. We do better, our clients do better, when we stay out of these MDLs where we have control in state court here, where we can pursue our own litigation, where we're not subject to some federal judge back east and lawyers back east managing the cases for us. Just, it's better. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, and I guess I was specific. You have to find, the discovery you would do would be on losses that were specific to the City of Sparks.
Exactly. We already have experts in place who are doing that on behalf of the state and each of the separate counties and cities we represent. They go in and work with the city manager and whoever, each department, and they calculate those damages.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dyer.
So my question goes to a little bit, across the country, obviously, this is a very sad, sad thing, and it's, if it affects one life, it's horrible, and it's affected many. But in our area here, opiates are not our biggest problem here. And so you, it seems interesting that we would opt out. When, across the country, they have a bigger problem, it would almost seem that we'd have a better chance of seeing something come out of something across the country when, in our region alone, it's on a different level. I'm just, I'm on the health board, I know stats, I know things, and I'm telling, I'm telling you opiates are not our biggest issue here.
Well, you might be surprised that, because there's, people don't talk about it very much, but it's probably, it may be a bigger problem than you think, Mr. Dyer. But the problem with, the problem with this, first of all, this national class, there's no requirement that any of the pharmaceutical companies or distributors even participate in it. It's just an order setting a plaintiff's class to negotiate when they're not even willing to negotiate right now. There's been a couple of companies, been throwing some numbers out there, but they're just, they're nonsense, they're not worth anything, and it's not going anywhere. They've been talking about this for months. With the numbers they're throwing out there, it's not going anywhere. The problem is, the way this class is set up, and this is something I've never seen done in thirty-two years of practice, I don't think it's constitutional, it's already being challenged on constitutional basis, which means it's going to end up in the U.S. Supreme Court. It's going to take a decade, even if they settle on this thing before that anybody sees any of that money, if it's found to be constitutional, which I don't think it will, and most constitutional scholars will tell you they don't think it's constitutional. We'll have your case tried and settled long before that. We can get these cases to trial a lot faster in Nevada, and the only place an appeal is going to go on one of these cases, it's the Nevada Supreme Court. It's not going to the U.S. Supreme Court. It'll end with our Supreme Court. We think we'll have the state case starting trial, the state's case starting trial down in Clark County by the end of next year. It'll be about a four-month trial. If they appeal, it'll be two years at the most on appeal. So we'll have the state's money in three years. Now, I think once we try the state's case or Clark County case, they're going to settle with us with all the different jurisdictions. And the problem with the national class is also, as I talked about in the presentation, Nevada has a much worse problem than most other states. We're in the top four. It's West Virginia, Ohio, Kentucky, and Nevada. Those are the four worst-hit states. And the exception, Ohio, it's all small states, small populated states. The way this class works, it's all based on population. Now California, I'm not saying they don't have a problem, but their per capita problem is nowhere near as bad as ours. California, New York, Texas, and Florida are walking away with all the money, and they don't have anywhere near the problems as the smaller rural states do. So it's a terrible deal for everybody involved.
Hey, Mr. Anderson.
Not sure who would be best to direct the question to, whether it's our city manager or a city attorney, but just help me understand as far as the man-hours involved, and likewise, if we have the ability to cover or back up those spots for those that would be involved on staff to take part, whether we opt out or not.
One other thing, I might be able to answer that question. Whatever those man-hours, so far, we haven't, like, for the city of, or the county of Clark, there hasn't been very many man-hours because our experts have been able to go in and pretty much do it on their own without, you know, doing that, without requiring a lot of man-hours. But those are costs. So if the city, if the City of Sparks has employees that you employ, that you pay a salary to, and they, we need them, let's say we need a couple of your employees for a week or two to work full-time with our experts on this, those are costs. So we would reimburse out of the eighteen million dollar line of credit we have right away those costs to the city. So you would not incur, maybe for a couple of weeks, and then we reimburse you. Those are costs, we'd be able to recoup those expenses at the end of the case, so there'll be no out-of-pocket expenses, even expenses for time of employees by Sparks.
No, and thank you for that clarification. That's what I figured that eighteen million dollar fund is being used for. I'm thinking more specific to our city. How would it impact our staff and, between the two options of going with the Ohio group or opting out?
In terms of impacting our staff, we run very lean as a city, as you all well know. And our staff is fully committed right now, doing things other than opioid litigation. So were you to choose to go forward in this direction, and staff is now asked to participate at whatever level, it's basically going to cause us to set aside other work that they're currently doing that would then have to wait while we did this work. That would be the, what I would describe as an impact, an adverse impact on our organization if we chose to do that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Lawson.
And this is a big concern for us. We're a small city, and we don't have any extra people. I mean, I look at my port police chief over here, and, you know, we'd have a real need for police and fire and people that'd be out there doing the everyday stuff, but we also, very short-staffed. We have not recovered from the Great Recession. You know, we lost forty percent of our employees, we lost fifty percent roughly of our ending fund, our general fund balance, and just last year, we were back to the levels where we were in 2008, and we're still down thirty percent on employees. So for us to dedicate employees is a huge decision for us. So I'm asking if, is there some type of formula or some type of number or your best guess as to the man-hours that would be required from our staff? And I don't care about the reimbursement part because we wouldn't even consider if that wasn't there, but it's the fact that we lose productivity on all the other fronts that we're working on, and affordable housing, and the streets, and maps, and everything else that we do.
I can't give you an exact, you know, number of hours or number of employees, Councilman Lawson. I can just tell you that our experience so far is it's been very limited. It's basically been simply our experts meeting with department heads, getting the information they have, getting the access to the data they have, and running the data themselves. It just, you know, we're, we've pretty much, right now, we've got the damages for the state already prepared. We have the damage model prepared, and I don't think the various agencies in the state, it took more than a few hours from each department head meeting with our experts and getting the data together.
Can you define a few for me? A few to me means three or five.
That's what I think, too, three to five hours, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Abbott.
I was probably on a similar question like Lawson. So if we, what are we looking for stat? Like, obviously, we give data to your experts that are working it. What would you need to talk to our staff about? One's that, I guess what additional information could be given?
Well, we're, I mean, we're going to need to look at the first responder statistics. We're going to need to see how many calls went out, you know, that were basically first responders, police, anything like that. I don't know if, I know Washoe County has a drug court, just like Clark County does. I don't know if you have any city drug courts that would be involved, but the, Health and Human Services, Social Services, any side of things, I don't know off the top of my head. We'd have to dig into it. I don't know what else services Sparks County provides its citizens, but virtually every department has been affected by the opiates crisis, virtually every one of them. For example, I mean, I know, just on the data we've got in Clark County, you know, you have a lot of home robberies. I was a victim of a home robbery several years ago where three kids broke into our house when we were on vacation, stole a bunch of stuff, and then they went and hawked it, and they were all addicted to opiates. And all three of these kids had sports injuries in high school, which is the typical story. They get a sports injury in high school, they have a surgery, they're, they get prescribed, you know, three months' worth of OxyContin, and they're addicted, and they turn to the street for these pills, or they turn to heroin. And that was the case here with all three of these kids from, you know, upper-middle-class families just happened to, all Bishop Gorman High School kids.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Ms. Bybee.
So kind of following up on Councilman Abbott, on information that you're gathering to determine what claims or losses the city has, as you look at some of those other than first responders, is some of that HIPAA protected? And how do you gauge in a city, if you have an opioid crisis that might be employee-related, you work with EAP, what kind of records can you get without violating HIPAA? And how, is that, is that a part of what you're looking for, for the numbers of our loss to the city?
Yes, Councilman Bybee, it is. And we, we know HIPAA inside and out. We know the protocol, our experts know, we know how to comply with the HIPAA laws when we're applying this information, so that we're not disclosing anybody's potential identities.
Okay, but that is information that is part of the discovery?
It is.
Of what you're looking for, of just the true impact of the opioid crisis on a city? You've got to look at all those things as well?
We do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brandon, why don't you come back up and?
Do you want me to step down?
Oh, you can stay right there, that's fine. So we're going to put this to a vote now, whatever the pleasure of the council. So if we do nothing, we're involved with Ohio.
Yes.
If we opt out, that's one, that's one option, that's the second option.
The opt-in or the opt-out is the primary decision that has to be made today.
So we do nothing, and we're still in, otherwise, we opt out.
Yes.
Okay? The other option is, that you were talking about earlier, was opt out and then hire an attorney.
Yes.
Attorney, we don't have to do that right now, though.
No, you wouldn't have to.
Okay.
You could, you could keep those rights in the city's back pocket.
Okay. So, does the council have any questions on those options that we have? Okay, we're looking for a motion, then.
And I'm going to tell you, this is when you don't want to be a city councilman, because there's virtually zero information, and we're making a decision based on our experience, and we have no ability to have self-control over this in any direction it goes. So I don't, I'm at a loss, but I'm almost to the point, what I'd like to do is opt out and then consider what to do past that. You know, the one thing that's appealing to me, if we go with the state, it's something that could be done and settled in a few years instead of decades. I don't want to be dealing with this forever and ever, and I don't think anybody does. This is one of the things that I pride myself on, is this council makes decisions, we get things done, and I would rather just get something done. So I guess I'm going to make the motion to opt out at this point, and then we'll discuss what we'll do for legal counsel on the outside.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion, but I did have a follow-up question I just wanted to ask. So in this region, the heroin addiction is the big issue. You kept mentioning that that's the gateway. Is it looking like you guys are going to be able to tie that in, as how things got to where they are today?
We absolutely have all the evidence to show that eighty percent, I will promise, I can guarantee you that eighty percent or more of the heroin addicts in your city started on prescription opiates. That's how they got there. And we have the experts, we have everything that ties it all together, so all the problems with the heroin addiction, that's part of the opiate problems, and those are part of the opiate damages. So yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for discussion. Mr. Dyer.
Yeah, the part that makes me want to agree with you guys is also, as a state, we are ranked very badly on all these things, and that is one story that nobody can take from us. I mean, it is one we want to give away, but it's one we're stuck with. And as you, as we go, that story might actually truly hold up in a way that some class action could never, because we have rankings that we get to see all the time, they're just no good, and this is one of them, this drug use. And so I'm going to, I'll agree, I think it'd be good to try to understand more, and nothing personal to you guys, it's just we want to make a good decision, but we'd probably like more information, so, okay.
Ms. Bybee.
Thank you. I did have a question. If we decided to opt out of the national case and then to make a decision later, if that's what we decide, what is the timeline for if we should decide to join in with your firms here? Is there a timeframe on that that we're looking at?
I mean, there's not necessarily a timeframe. The only concern I have is that the City of Reno case is already started. We are very, we're filing the Washoe County case very shortly, just like in Clark County with Las Vegas, Henderson, and North Las Vegas, there is crossover in the damages, and we have to ferret that out. And so it will be much more efficient to be able to pursue the discovery on behalf of Washoe County, Reno, and Sparks all together in one coordinated discovery effort, as opposed to going forward with Reno and Washoe County and then having to come back later and try to get the information. It'll just cost more money. The cost will be higher because we'll be duplicating efforts. That would be the only concern. But obviously, you know, if you need more time, you take whatever time you need, but we are moving forward with the rest of these lawsuits and trying to coordinate the discovery between all the counties and the cities statewide, because that will cut down significantly on the expenses of the case and be better for all the counties and cities.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, see, none, all, please vote. That's as announced, we're going to opt out. Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can we do direction at the end?
Some direction.
Yeah.
The city manager and the council.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? If not, looking for a motion?
If we can stick on nine-four for a few seconds, the way the item is agendized, you can give that direction today. We laid out a couple of alternatives that, once you elected, if you elected to opt out as you did, you could, if you so chose, you could wait and give me direction to go get some additional questions answered, or you could go forward and elect an attorney today. So that, and we can do that right now. That's the way your agenda is set up.
I think, because this is so brand-new for us, and it's hard for me to make this huge of a decision, I'd like to see, maybe we have another attorney-client at our next meeting, prior to our next meeting, and let's talk about the pros and cons of Mr. Eglet's firm versus other firms. At this point, we're going to need... At this point, we're gonna need to hire an outside firm regardless, based on our vote. So I, I think making that decision sooner rather than later is more beneficial, in my mind. So if, if that's direction, I hope it is enough direction.
For me, it is.
Ms. Bybee.
Um, I, I would agree, and I would ask if we can look at obtaining the information we need doing attorney-client. And I would like to see, since we only have, we have one more meeting in November and one in December. So I really would like to see if by the next meeting, or December at the very latest, that we come to a decision before the end of the year. So, next meeting would be my preference.
Understood.
Okay. Okay, now we'll move on to consent items. Anybody wanna pull one? If not, looking for a motion. Uh, Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve the consent items, eight-point-one through eight-point-four.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Dare.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay. Nine-point-one, consideration discussion of possible approval of the appointments to the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and members of this council. For the record, Neil Cruz, your city manager. Here today with an item where we have two vacant alternate positions on the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. We have vacancies in Ward Two and in Ward Five. The vacancy in Ward Two will run through November of 2022, and the vacancy in Ward Five will run through November of 2020. Both of those are terminus with the sitting council positions when, when they, when they, when they, those terms come to a close. So we did receive six applications. Those applications were shared with you and the balance of the council, and we stand ready for your recommendation and vote.
Okay, my recommendations are from Ward Two, Kim Spoon, and from Ward Five, Raynell Holtz. So we're looking for a motion to accept my recommendations. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve to accept your recommendations.
Uh, looking for a second, Mr. Anderson. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, nine-point-two, consideration of possible approval of expenditure of $323,703 to provide parts and labor to refurbish three of the fire department's brush trucks at Fire Trucks Unlimited. Mr. Corman, Mr. Reed. Is this a refurbishment or is it repairs?
For a refurbishment.
Yeah. Just jack it up a little bit. All righty.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the council. Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager. With me is Chief Reed from the Fire Department. Today, I'm before you to ask your consideration for three, to expend $323,703 to provide parts and labor to refurbish three of our fire department's brush trucks. Shown in the picture above is a picture of one of the brush trucks. The other two are very similar. These three trucks are, uh, two of them are fourteen years old, one of them is twelve years old. These trucks see a lot of use throughout the year, both in urban interface, wildland fires in our area, and also go out on mutual aid. The refurbishment that we're requesting is because these trucks are in good condition overall, but they need a little bit of work done to them. The refurbishment will include stripping the trucks down to the frame, having the frames inspected, blasted, and repainted. They will go through all the fluids on the trucks. They will repair all the wear items, things like tie rod ends, U-joints, and the like. As they put the trucks back together again, the electrical systems will be completely inspected and overhauled as necessary. The pumps will be, uh, overhauled to new condition. All of the valves and pump gauges and things will be, uh, overhauled or replaced to new condition. The lighting on the units will be upgraded to better, more, modern LED lighting. The tank and foam gauges will be replaced with high-visibility gauges that can be seen from a long distance. So as firefighters are working away from the truck, they'll be able to glance back at the truck and have an idea of how much foam and/or water capacity is still onboard. And, um, I think that pretty well covers, oh, the foam systems themselves will be cleaned, inspected, and upgraded as necessary. This, uh, company that we're looking at to do this work is called Fire Trucks Unlimited. They're located down in Henderson, Nevada. They specialize in refurbishing, refurbishing fire apparatus. And we are looking to join her with Unified Fire Authority that is the fire authority for the greater Salt Lake City area. They, uh, do quite a bit of work with this company. Other, other outfits in the state of Nevada do a lot of work with this company down in Henderson, uh, Fire Trucks Unlimited. But this was a contract that was current that we found that we could join her onto. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Reed, if he has anything he'd like to add.
Just like to add, one of the things we're looking at with this is just trying to extend the life of, of these three apparatus. You know, they're not in service every single day, but it's an important piece of apparatus to have. And the, these two, like Mr. Corman said, so they're like a sister, uh, brush trucks that we purchased in, uh, 2005, and then the, the next one we got in, uh, 2007 that's very similar. But one of the biggest reasons is everyone's heard of the DEF, right? Every new engine that's a diesel has this new DEF. Well, these don't have it. So we'd like to kind of preserve that in our engines. The engines are great. Like I said, just needs a little TLC. And then with the approved apparatus, um, repair and purchase program that we already have, we'll be able to actually sneak in a couple more apparatus that we never, we were able to, um, get in that plan when we first came up with it about six years ago.
This may be silly, but you send one down at a time, or?
Yeah, so kind of my, you know, fire chief rule is I need two fire trucks, uh, in the valley at once. And so, yeah, the company didn't like it, but they are gonna work with us.
Okay.
So, I mean, if we approve this today, honestly, this thing's probably gonna head down on Thursday.
Okay.
And then they'll do it, you know, send someone down to inspect it, and those guys will, you know, drive the other one down, drive the other one back.
Okay.
So, yeah, one at a time.
Mr. Lawson.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I would just like to add that the, uh, today's, uh, well, in the fiscal '20 budget, it was, uh, um, approved for us to replace one of the trucks. And, um, the current cost to replace a brush truck is between $380 and $400,000. And we're looking at a backlog right now of about two years before we'd see delivery on that truck. Whereas we'll be able to refurbish all three of these trucks. We expect to get at least another ten years of, of life expectancy out of these rigs, and we'll have them all back and completed before the beginning of the next fire season.
Good job. Mr. Lawson.
Well, I was gonna make a motion. We're ready to go.
Sure.
Is it appropriate to put flames on there?
If you direct us, we can.
I'm thinking chrome rims would look really good, too.
We are sparks. You might not make it back.
Put a fire emoji on it. Let's be millennials.
Yeah.
Okay, I move to approve the expenditure of $323,703 to provide parts and labor to refurbish three of the fire truck, fire department's brush trucks at Fire Trucks Unlimited, utilizing the joiner bid from Unified Fire Authority Contract, UFA 14-110.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Dare.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Anderson?
Actually, I just wanna thank you guys. This is a perfect example of working for the best solution for, for a community. Here, we're getting three refurbished, like-new trucks when we're all said and done for less money than if you would've taken the easy choice and just said, yeah, give us a new one. So I just wanna compliment you guys. The job well done. Thank you.
Flames?
Flames.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Okay, nine-point-three, consideration of possible approval of an expenditure of $586,337.42 to purchase eighteen new vehicles from Champion Chevrolet.
Again, good afternoon, Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager. Before you, at this time, is for your consideration to approve a per, an expenditure of $586,337.42 to purchase eighteen vehicles from Champion Chevrolet, utilizing a joiner with the State of Nevada contract. This year, we came before you a little bit differently than we've done in the past. I've come before you several times throughout the year for different purchases of vehicles as, as they kind of became ready. And so, to save your time, uh, we tried to put everything together all in, in one, um, agenda item. These eighteen vehicles, or of these eighteen vehicles, eleven of the vehicles are replacements. So they were, um, scheduled and were included in the vehicle replacement program for fiscal year '20. Vehicles being replaced across the board from different departments, Police Department, Fire, Public Works. Seven of these vehicles are new vehicles. These are new needs that were included in the city manager's recommendation for, uh, this fiscal year. And I'll outline those vehicles for you. One vehicle will be assigned to the Police Department, one to Fire Prevention. Two vehicles will be assigned to Parks Maintenance. Two vehicles will be assigned to Drains Operations, and one vehicle will be assigned to Sewer Operations. These seven vehicles do represent additions to the city's fleet. The other eleven vehicles are replacements, so one vehicle will be going out of the fleet in return for one new one coming in. This concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions and comments? Mr. Dare.
I just have a quick question, one thing that might help. I like that you did this as a list and everything, but it might be nice to have some general idea of when we're expecting these vehicles to become, you know, you know, I mean, even if, I mean, not that you, you know particularly, but when it comes to our fleet and us just keeping track of where spending's going and what is happening, I just think it'd be nice to know if we're expecting these five in the beginning of the year, or when, I don't know, whatever, just some, on your list here, and that'd just be helpful to me.
I can, I can answer your question partially.
Okay.
Uh, if you'd like. About five of those vehicles are currently sitting on the lot over at Champion Chevrolet. So as soon as we, uh, complete a purchase order, we'll be able to take delivery of those vehicles and start processing, processing them into the fleet. The rest of them will have to be built, and based on which plant they come from, um, may determine how long it takes to get. So some of the heavier-duty vehicles, the one-ton or higher vehicles, might take a little bit longer than, uh, the, the light-duty half-ton trucks, depending on when they roll off. Also, the, uh, strike that they had, um, at General Motors kind of put a little bit of a wrinkle in things, so they're a little bit behind on production. But our assurances are that buying through a government contract, that there is some sort of a priority that's associated with it. So they will put government contracts into a, um, kind of into a run, and they'll run those through and then go back to standard building. So, uh, if that answers, we will see five of them in, uh, in the next week or so. And then we'll expect to see the rest of them probably all delivered, I would think, by the end of March.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Bybee.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve an expenditure of $586,337.42 to purchase eighteen new vehicles from Champion Chevrolet, utilizing a joiner with the State of Nevada, contract number 99SWC-S490.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Move on to nine-point-five, consideration of impossible action on request to direct the city manager to review and propose changes to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to add locational criteria for signs and additional permitted uses. Mr. Rundle, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Jim Rundle, the planning manager. The City of Sparks has been utilizing the new zoning code for approximately four years. I think we've had a number of good success stories in utilizing that new zoning code. As time goes by, the planning staff identifies or encounters issues that we couldn't have contemplated four years ago or five years ago when we were drafting that, that zoning code. Most recently, one of those is, uh, internet-based businesses. Not necessarily an Amazon-type of business, but a smaller scale. And another component that we probably did address, and, and maybe have gone the wrong direction on, was auto-oriented businesses within what used to be the transit-oriented development, now the mixed-use district area. And then, and then lastly, some, uh, locational, um, requirements in regard to, to signage standards. At a recent meeting, um, a pre-application meeting, which we host with the public, some of these issues came to light, and then I believe, uh, those citizens contacted Councilman Lawson. And at the October 14th City Council meeting, Councilman Lawson directed the city manager to have staff bring back an item for your consideration. And this is the opportunity to direct staff or the city manager to go work on some of those components in the zoning code. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Lawson.
Now, this, uh, you know, we've done a great job. When we rewrote our ordinances, we did an excellent job. Obviously, it can never be a hundred percent. This is really a cleanup to that. Just to give you an example, Rail City is in mixed-use residential, which probably is not the right zoning for them, and, and they wanna switch to an electronic sign. That's one. The other is, uh, right, uh, down here on Prater where the, uh, Reno Vulcanizing, Jiffy Lube, the car wash, and two repair facilities sit back in there, and we won't allow another auto-oriented business in that, that same center. So, you know, those kind of logical things that would make sense to the ordinary person obviously didn't get captured in the, in the rewrite of the ordinance. So that's all we're asking for, is just make some logical, common-sense decisions here.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Need a motion?
Yep, we're looking for a motion.
All right, I'm gonna move to direct the city manager to review and propose changes to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to add locational criteria for signs and additional permitted uses, specifically internet-based retail and auto-oriented uses in the mixed-use zoning districts.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jim. Thank you. Okay, nine-point-six, consideration discussion of possible approval of Resolution Number 3354 adopting the 2019 Fiscal Impact Analysis Guidelines. Armando.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, member of the city council. I am Armando Anelis, the Assistant Community Services Director. So back on September 23rd, uh, there was a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council where staff presented the results of work on fiscal analysis undertaken by the consulting firm Economic and Planning Systems. During that first part of that workshop, you may recall Jeff Kronk reviewed with the council on the Planning Commission, the, uh, guidelines that were prepared by EPS that are intended to help the city obtain, uh, objective and consistent estimates of both, uh, costs and revenues, uh, associated with new development. At the conclusion of the workshop, the City Council directed the city manager to return with an agenda item for approval of the guidelines. So Resolution Number 3354, uh, provides for exactly that, for adoption of the Fiscal Impact Analysis Guidelines. If the council adopts the guidelines, applicants requesting certain land use entitlements that are required to be submitted with a fiscal impact analysis would be obligated to utilize the methodology. And, uh, that requirement applies to comprehensive plan land use amendments for sites that are over five acres in size, for annexations, for any expansions of the city's sphere of influence, and for rezoning and administrative review requests for sites, greenfield sites over twenty acres in size. And you may recall, a greenfield, uh, site is one, uh, that's not been previously developed. In terms of the proposed resolution, the guidelines, uh, or the resolution itself states that the guidelines will be reviewed every two years and revised if necessary. And so what would trigger an actual revision would be if there are, uh, changes that actually impact the city's cost structure. So for example, let's say we added a, a sixth fire station or a seventh fire station. If there's a sizable annexation that's, uh, impacting service costs, or alternatively, if there was something in, on the revenue side that is impacting revenues to the city, we would need to update the guidelines so that when applicants use them, uh, they would reflect, you know... know, current, current circumstances. So, with that, I'll conclude my presentation and address any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, Armando, is there a way, let's say the fiscal impact comes back and it says it's a bad idea, is there a way for the applicant to appeal that if, if staff says, you know what, you don't meet the guidelines?
Well, so, I, I think, as we discussed during the workshop, it's one piece of information that the Planning Commission, well, let's start with staff, but staff, the Planning Commission and the City Council can utilize to make a decision about a land use entitlement. So, for example, you might have a project that's submitted that comes in with a fiscal impact analysis that shows a negative fiscal impact, but there may be other reasons, other policy reasons why approval may be warranted. Conversely, you might-
It's just one piece of the puzzle.
It's one piece of information.
The reason why I like this is it's at least a piece of the puzzle. It's not arbitrary, so any developer, they come in and they know what they're getting. And I like that part, that consistency is, it's what's making us very successful. So, I think this is great.
Ms. Bybee.
So, Armando, on, if this would be adopted, does this, would this be effective immediately? Is it the first of the year? And then, obviously, any projects that are already in your, your land use requests that you have right now are not going to have to change course, or are they? Kind of give me an idea of the timeline of, of how you're going to utilize this.
Councilwoman Bybee, we would probably require these guidelines to be employed, starting with applications that are submitted to the city in December, and that's toward the latter part of the month. So, anything that's in progress already would not be required to be redone.
Thank you.
Mr. Dare.
So, when it comes to this, have we heard responses from any developers? And how are we communicating this? We just don't want, we don't want to be surprising anybody, and I know when we make big changes, other places, we have workshops and we do something. What, what is our plan of making sure that we're pretty clear on what's expected?
Well, we'll start, and first and foremost, really, we will upload the guidelines to the city's website. There, all the application materials for submitting a land use entitlement application to the city are on there with, along with the applications themselves, and we would add that to the website. And so, if someone is obligated to submit a fiscal impact analysis, they'll see the guidelines.
They'll see it right away. How about, so, and then anybody already in the, in the pocket, in a sense, they're not affected, then like you just said?
If, if we have a application that's been submitted, and frankly, if something is submitted this month because it would already be well underway, we, it would not apply.
And then, developers, have we heard anything back from any responses from anybody? I think they'd actually like this. I think it's gonna help them know what's expected.
You know, we've had a couple of conversations where we've briefed, you know, industry members, and, you know, what we heard was, was pretty positive.
I think so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
I move to approve resolution number three-three-five-four, adopting the two thousand and nineteen fiscal impact analysis guidelines as a standard for fiscal impact analysis submitted with land use entitlement requests.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes, you can ask me. Thank you, Armando.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any public hearing action items unrelated to planning zoning, so we'll move on to eleven point one. Planning and zoning public hearings. Public hearing, consideration of, of and possible action on request to amend the tentative development handbook for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, generally located north, I'm not gonna read that part. It's a whole paragraph where it's generally located. You can do that.
I'll go over that, don't worry about it.
You'll cover that.
I gotta find my PowerPoint first. Somebody shut things down, so.
Oh, okay.
Bear with me, I'm sorry. Somebody shut the program. It was on the desktop when I came here earlier.
We're just trying to make it interesting.
Right. Give you guys a breather.
Where's the Jeffrey?
Yeah.
Dude.
All right.
Huh? Oh, I got a freeze up.
Anyway, good afternoon. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. This presentation is a review of a proposed amendment to the tentative handbook for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. You'll see the eight-hundred-and-seventy-four acre property is outlined here in red. It's split by Pyramid Highway and Sparks Boulevard. Here is Lazy Five Park, this would be the quarry. Pyramid, I mean, I'm sorry, Pioneer Meadows is here. The background on this project is, this handbook was originally approved in the year two thousand and four. We did review and approve an amendment in two thousand and sixteen, which incorporated adding thirty-eight acres. It combined the two neighborhood parks into a community park. Then, in two, January of this year, the council approved a, or certified a comprehensive plan amendment. This comprehensive plan amendment rearranged some of the land uses and also reduced some of them. It modified the acreages and reallocated some of the land uses. There have been nine handbooks that have been recorded, final handbooks that have been recorded to date. This amendment to this tentative handbook will influence some of those handbooks. I'll talk about that more in a minute. To simplify things, this is a pretty complicated issue, so what I've done is broken this down into essentially four components, four items that are being amended, or looked at, or being amended in this handbook today. The first one is the land use map, which is bringing the land use map into conformance with the comprehensive plan that was approved in January of this year. They have changed the floor area ratios, which I'll talk about in a minute. They've added a warehousing and distribution as a permitted use in the business park, and they've also updated the street networks and the infrastructure maps to reflect what's been installed today, or soon to be installed. First, I'd like to talk about the land use. You can see here on the left, this map here is the approved, which is in the two thousand and sixteen version of the handbook. This is what they're proposing today. Pretty much the biggest change that you'll see is this is the two schools. This is be the middle school, and this is the elementary school under construction. They have changed some of this. The yellow here represents on both of them, there's the residential. The red is the commercial. This is mixed use, this crimson, crimson color. And then, the tannish color here is your arterial commercial. This is your business park area. Looking at the tables, what I've done is I broke the land use table that is in my staff report into three pieces so you could actually read the numbers during the meeting today. On the left here, you'll see the land uses. On the headers of each one of these, you'll have, this is what's in the approved handbook. This is the approved, proposed handbook. You can see here, this is the residential land uses. The residential land uses, there's been a reduction in the low, medium, and a reduction in the high, but overall, there's been an increase in the residential total acreage. The city staff calculated on these changes in which results in residential densities increasing by one point, eleven point three to eleven point nine percent overall for the residential districts. I've included this graph to give you a quick comparison, and I'll go into the tables. You can see the biggest changes here are in the business park, community commercial, and, and the school, just, the school sites. I broke the table for the non-residential uses into two pieces. The first is the actual land uses, it would be mixed in the arterial and the community commercial. Our biggest change is in the community commercial, where you're looking at a loss of twelve acres. And in the business park, we're looking at a loss of forty-six point five acres. And the non-residential, continuing, the schools went up by twenty-three acres, and the parks and open space are essentially the same. Overall, there's been a reduction in the non-residential by about eighteen point two acres. Let me talk about the floor area ratios. The floor area ratio, again, this is the land uses, this is the approved handbook, this is the proposed handbook. The major difference between the approved and the proposed handbook is the approved handbook had a maximum floor area ratio, which doesn't give the city any guarantee on the intensity of what type of development could happen. And so, what this is a proposal is to give a minimum FAR, which gives us some guarantee that they would have to do point two for arterial commercial, for example. Staff did do an analysis and looking at FARs or floor area ratios, which is the relationship of the building on the property. So, if you have an acre and you fill half of that property with building, then you have a point five floor area ratio. So, you can see, like, under community commercial, that means that they're covering twenty-five percent of that property. We had, we did an analysis looking at typical development within the Truckee Meadows and figuring out what the average FARs, and these numbers are comparable to what the average FARs are in the, in the area. In the handbook, there is a section that has sets of criteria. So, for example, if they wanted to build in a community, in a shopping center, one of the, the community commercial pieces, they wanted to build the pad first for like a fast food restaurant, but they aren't building the center yet. That would no way meet the FAR of the point two-five. In the handbook, there are criteria that they can do that development as long as the master developer shows that overall in the future, that whole community center would, or community commercial center would be developed at the point two-five. So, there are some stipulations in the handbook or criteria that allows some flexibility, but overall, they have to meet this. The other thing that's important to know is that these floor area ratios cannot be transferred. So, for example, if you wanted to do a higher in the arterial and less in the community, you can't transfer them. That stays within that land use designation. It cannot be transferred between. The other thing that they added to the handbook is a warehousing and distribution as a permitted use in the business park. There is a note in the handbook that they, every, any building cannot be more than two-hundred-thousand square feet. Based on the conclusions from the EPS report, it said that over the next twenty years, Sparks does not have enough industrial land to accommodate what's projected to be developed as industrial within the city. So, staff is supporting this addition of the land use because we feel that this provides a new type of land use within the Kylie Ranch handbook. This use can be built, but it would not have to be built. And also, it's important to note that the office is still a permitted use within the business park. All they're doing is adding, this is an additional land use within the business park. In talking about the fiscal impact analysis, the applicant's analysis projects the fiscal impact to be positive by about ten point eight million dollars over the twenty-year period. This fiscal impact analysis did not obviously follow, since you just adopted the criteria, was not done under that. But, we staff feels that the estimates may be a little high based on our new criteria, but we still feel that, that this fiscal impact will be positive to the city. Looking at job housing balance, when the Kylie handbook was, or Plan Development was originally approved, that was one of the things that was important to council, was that there was a job housing balance in this property. You can see here on the approved, and this is actually not the two thousand and sixteen version, this is based on the two thousand and four version, because, because of the two thousand and sixteen is based on a maximum, it's hard to figure out, calculate your job housing balances because you don't have what could possibly have. If you have a minimum, at least you know the minimum of what would be developed. So, we, we did the analysis based on the two thousand and four. And back in two thousand and four, the job housing ratio was one point six jobs to every house. And then, using the same criteria, what we did is we took the same employment factors that we did back in two thousand and four, so that we're comparing apples to apples in the numbers calculated. We estimated that there'd be about seven thousand and twenty-five jobs created through the school, the schools, the commercial, medical business, medical campus, and also the business park. Using that number to the ratio of the maximum number of housing units, which is four thousand four hundred and sixty-three, that gives us a ratio estimation of one point five seven to one, and, which is not a substantial change. We feel that it's still within the range of one, and we originally approved the Kylie Plan Handbook. Now, I would like to go through the seven Plan Development findings. This first finding asks the council to look at the handbook, is, is it consistent with the Plan Development goals and policies, not only for what's in the handbook, but also what's in our code? The proposed handbook is consistent with the objective that's in the tentative handbook that's approved, and also with Sparks Municipal Code. The amendment does not change the overall code requirements. It provides open space, which is required, is a criteria in the Sparks Municipal Code. It also provides a variety of housing types and a mix of land use. So, staff feels that, and Planning Commission feels that this A finding can be met. B finding looks at whether the changes to the zoning regulations are in the public interest, and if the handbook, if the handbook regulations are far astude from what's in the, the Sparks Municipal Code or not. The residential densities that are proposed within the handbook are within the range of what's in our Sparks Municipal Code. Only in the mixed-use districts do we have the floor area ratios. In this handbook, they are having floor area ratios for all of our commercial districts, and then also the business park. The handbook does not permit all of the industrial uses that are permitted in the Sparks Municipal Code, but that's in keeping with what they have a vision for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. The handbook also has a maximum height of a hundred and seventy feet, and this actually is to accommodate the proposal for the hospital in the community commercial area. The Title Twenty has no limits in the downtown Victorian Square for height, but generally, our maximum height in our zoning code is sixty feet. And looking, the next finding, C, looks at the ratio of residential to non-residential. And you can see on the left here is the approved, so it's, it's forty-nine to forty-point-six, and on this side is forty-seven. So, it's essentially a two percent change between the approved and the proposed, which is not a substantial change. Finding D looks at the adequacy of open space. The Plan Development standards require that there's twenty percent open space. This is met in the handbook through the use of your streetscapes, your trail corridors, the, and the community park. That also has in the handbook standard of requirements of who maintains which type of open space. The next finding, E, looks at the public services and the adequacy of these services. As I stated earlier, chapter four in the handbook, which is the, the infrastructure, is being updated to reflect what's been built out there and what's anticipated to be built. For example, the connection of Windfield Hills Road, which is not originally in the old handbook. It provides standards for the improvements of your open space and community park and trail system. Finding F is the relationship of the Plan Development to the neighborhood or the surrounding area. This handbook was approved in two thousand, the original one was approved out in two thousand and four, and has been under construction over many years. It did get stalled during the Great Recession, but it's still back, it's back being developed right now. This is a big, one of our largest of Plan Developments within the City of Sparks, and it's really important for the community's future. The handbook does provide a variety of housing options, retail services, including medical. The proposed changes do not change the street network, which would be affecting the neighbors nor the trail system, which could potentially affect the neighbors. The last finding, which is G, which is protecting the integrity of the plan for the people that are living within the, the plan area or surrounding it. Kylie Ranch has been phased over many years, and this amendment does, does retain the integrity of the originally approved plan. There are not major changes to the land uses or the development standards, and it does regulate the character and development quality within the Plan Development, provides for community facilities and the utilities and the street network. With the approval of this proposed tentative handbook, there will have to be several final handbooks that will be back before you, for a review and approval. They will have to bring them into conformance with this tentative handbook. Based on that, staff and Planning Commission believes all seven findings can be made and recommends approval. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Karen, any questions or comments? Shirley, your name is up there, is that before?
Karen, I had a question on one of your slides, you had a road funds deficit of 25.1 million, what's that all about?
Oh, didn't mean to go all the way out. The road funds are always, what I, this is what, in the fiscal impact analysis, it was submitted by the applicant, they projected that the revenue for the general fund would be 35.9 million, where the road fund would be a deficit of 25.1 million. Generally, our road funds are deficit to the city because of the maintenance of our roads over a 20-year period.
Mayor Smith, if I may, Armando Ornelas, this is the Community Service, so, we ask in these fiscal impact analysis for them to look at the general and road funds separately. The results here, again, this isn't based on the guidelines that were just adopted, but as Ms. Melby said, in general, the ratio, if you will, of the positive in the general fund and the negative in the road fund are not that different from what we're seeing overall, and so, there's not enough revenue to the road fund, from those dedicated sources to the road fund, to cover the costs over the 20-year period, and so we, this is, again, very similar to what we saw overall for, in that long-term fiscal analysis for the city, where there's a projected negative in that fund. In this case, it's offset by a positive in the road fund, as Ms. Melby again said-
In the road fund?
I'm sorry, in the general fund, pardon me, in the road, in the general fund, so, I think, in general, because Kylie has a mix of land uses, this probably performs better over the long-term, than that long-term fiscal health analysis for the city as a whole, so, you know, I think in this case, it's a positive.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dare.
I'm ready to make a motion, if you'd like, sir.
Sure.
Public hearing.
Sorry?
You have to have a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, it is public hearing, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll open up the public hearing, anybody in the audience wanting to speak at this time? Come on down.
Good afternoon, for the record, Mike Rayly with Christie Corporation, I think Karen did a great job, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Dare, wait, anybody else want to speak under a public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the amended Tentative Development Handbook for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, generally located north of the Southern Division of Kylie Ranch, east of Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, south of Lazy Five Regional Park, and along Pyramid Highway, Sparks, Nevada, on a site approximately 874.2 acres in size in the NUD zoning district. To revise Exhibit 1-3, Master Plan, and Table 1-1 to comply with the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, change the floor area ratios for development, amend development standards, and other matters related thereto.
We have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second with comments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion, Ms. Bybee?
I would just like to comment on, the project as a whole is what we're really looking for, for that mixed use, and really bringing, we need residential, obviously, in the region, but bringing all these other uses and looking at warehousing, looking at a variety of projects, commercial and retail, combined with our residential, I think is a really good move forward that we're trying to accomplish within the city, so I appreciate that, and Karen, I would like to especially appreciate your PowerPoint presentation, because it's so much information, if we were just reading through it on the computer, sometimes I kind of get lost, so this, and I'm visual, so, maybe that's why, but it really was easy, and I appreciate how you broke it down, to make it kind of into small nuggets instead of, you know, the whole thing at once. Easy for you, but I'm not a planner, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Oh, Paul's not here. So, it passes unanimously with those present, thank you. Okay, moving on, we're going to open up to the public comment, anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager? Ms. Bybee, your name's still up there, didn't put it there.
Oh, I'm not paying attention.
Comments from anybody? Nothing? Then, we, without objection, we are adjourned.